Maybe I'm worrying about something. Of course, it just seems to me that that biggest thing cut out of the main truck.
There's a lot of weight.
I said, you know, the nice power off at the wrong time, at the wrong place, you know, for blocks.
Oh, yeah.
It's been prevented.
Who was the chief before?
Dave.
Hey. I didn't call him earlier this morning. I called jury duty down there. They're doing the interview.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know anybody in the police department? Who do you know? Chief May. I moved the DB removed.
Perfect.
That's it. I saw Dave. So I hope you don't mind my. Who we are.
You're not.
Yeah.
He was a great guy. We did a lot of stuff and all over the country together.
What's that?
In the trash. I still do a lot of these. A family vacation we've been over and he goes with us.
You got old iron, but now he's a mother and I are classmates.
Is that right?
Yeah, Rita. She's one of the rich.
Okay.
Hardly even made it upstairs from this.
Pretty good.
I don't remember much.
That's almost sounds like that song.
Yeah.
You could make a version.
All right, it's 4:30, folks, and it's time to get started on our work session on Monday, August 13. I believe that we'll just start at the top of our agenda and work our way down. The first item is second reading of ordinance rezoning on Mount Pleasant Street. This is the place that used to be oil change place there, right, Eric? And they want to make a used car dealership. There's no, nothing different from last week on that.
No, no.
Counsel, do you have any questions, Eric, on that one?
No, sir.
We're probably okay with that, then.
Yep.
While you're there, this unsafe building ordinance, I know Mr. Brosin had talked to us at the meeting last Monday, and I saw him actually yesterday.
Yeah.
So he's been in to see you, I guess.
Yeah, I talked to him last week and didn't have any issues and kind of clarified that our doing is actually less stringent than what is there before, and it coincides with the tests that we get back. And told him if we want to look at changes in the future, we can still do that, but we just wanted to take this step to make sure the results coming back are what they're getting in their testing.
Mm-hmm.
And he said he had a chance to review it and didn't have any issues with it.
Their group's pretty, okay.
He said he was going to come next Monday and probably support it, too.
Okay. Good. All right. We're still waiting on collective bargaining agreement. Is it the CWA that's coming tomorrow?
We're supposed to meet with, or Beth is scheduled to meet with her presenters on Wednesday.
Okay. On Wednesday.
Wednesday.
All right. So we have these three items, all of them amending contracts. And here she comes.
Okay. As you know, at the last meeting, we tabled the CWA amendment as well as the AFSMI amendment. And Jim and I have very good news for you. The firefighters did accept the same amendment language as the other two bargaining units. So we have all three for you to consider and hopefully approve at Monday night's meeting. Just to go over the savings, I think we've talked about these numbers before, but just real quickly, the AFSMI wage concession saved us over $81,000 for fiscal year 14. CWA, $28,000. The firefighters, almost $49,000. So the total savings for all three unions in fiscal '14 is $158,000, which I consider a significant savings. And I'm sure you do, too. Of course, the non-union savings in fiscal year '13 will be $62,600. I do want to mention Grant Hillier and I, and also Stephanie, will be meeting with the CWA rep Wednesday morning. And when I had my discussion with her here, I guess, week before last now, she talked like she might like to have her signature on that amendment, too, which doesn't change anything, except, you know, her signature line will be there. And if she does ask to do that, I will add that on to the amendment in the packet that you'll be receiving for the council meeting Monday night.
Yeah. Has changed strictly the salaries, correctly. It doesn't get into the health benefit cost.
No, we, that was part of the union's proposal, was to keep the insurance as it is, status quo, with that 5% ceiling.
Right.
Yes. So if the premium increases over 5%, they're contractually required to go to the table with us and look at plan design changes, employee contributions to the premium, or whatever it takes to get it 5% or below.
5% on average. So you think that they have a percent per so give?
Yes. It was a 5% cumulative. And in previous years, they have actually agreed to changes that dropped it below 5%. In fact, I'm not sure if I have it real handy, but if I do.
It's confusing language, actually.
Yes. In 2010, they dropped it to 3.19% rather than just the 5%. And in 2011, it was 3.5. 2012, it was 4.7. So it's the 3.5, the additional 1.5% savings, and the 0.3% in 2012 to equal the 1.8% to the good, so to speak. So, you know, it could increase a little more than 5%.
In a given year.
In a given year, yes.
Mrs. Hunter, can you refresh my memory? What employee groups are in, which union?
Okay. Of course, the firefighters are the firefighters and the captains, who also serve as paramedics. For the CWA, it's police officers, communication operators, records clerks, humane officer, and the parking enforcement attendant, basically all police department employees.
Police department, yeah.
And then AFSMI is property maintenance, vehicle maintenance, streets, parks, wastewater, bus, clerical, custodial, and also the library is a part of the AFSMI group. They have their separate contract, but they're part of the AFSMI group.
All right. So that's the, obviously, the biggest group.
Yes. And that's why they create the biggest savings.
For the $81,000.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I just really appreciate them not doing this and just putting it to 2%. I think that's good. I know there's some people that would have liked to have seen, you know, to get healthcare and everything, but I think I'm just pleased that we were able to do something at this time.
Well, thank you, and we are as well. And it was completely voluntary because we're in the middle of these contracts, so, you know, we couldn't go to them and say, hey, but Jim just gave them the numbers and they talked us and came back with this and.
That'll help us out a lot, I think.
I agree.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Go sprinting back.
Sorry, I was a little late.
I'm going to go sprinting back to your office. Thank you. Let's go down to consent agenda, and we'll come back to discussion items. See, we have three pages of nuisance abatements. Then we also have a grant application for a transportation and trans mobility manager. Is that why Mike is here?
Yeah.
The city reached out to us to do a partnership evaluation between the urban service and regional planning commission through CBus. There's an opportunity for mobility manager funding, and this obviously wouldn't be the only part of the scope of work for this position. But we've contacted DOT, looks like the money's available, so if the city's on board, we've got some other things they can work on as well, in addition to looking at the opportunities.
Was included in the resolution, talked about $5,000, which is a little bit different than what he had in his proposal. We'd originally talked with the local match on an 80-20 grant. Looking at a $10,000 local match, you're now saying it's closer to.
I think it's probably going to be, I mean, the exact number is going to be down the road because, you know, if we do the application, we're going to have to hire a person to do this, depending on what that salary is and other things in that budget line item. I ran some numbers today, and I got to apologize to Jim, the 5,000 was a little too quick off the top of my head, so it looks like we're going to be more than the 7,000 range.
So we may change the resolution language to just say 50% of the local match. So.
And we're going to commit the other, the other half. And, you know, when we do, part of the mobility manager program is to do outreach in the community to evaluate how they're using transit services and if they could use them more or in a different way. And so we might pick up some other partnership opportunities there, too.
So the partnership opportunities can't happen unless we have this mobility manager, is that right?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say one would preclude the other, but I think that it would bring, it would bring more resources to the table. You know, you could do something maybe a little bit more simply, but, you know, I think it's going to involve talking with more groups, and it's not, it's not just a bus or a CBus issue, it's also about, you know, the people using the service and the private entities that could benefit from it, too. So I think maybe taking a little bit broader perspective will help the process.
We've talked about what we could potentially look at in terms of reviewing our system, any weaknesses of what, things that people may, may think that we're not doing as well as we could, possible changes to, or modifications to our route so the laborer can provide service. Also, structure of providing service, whether it makes the most sense for us to be doing it internally, or whether there could be some sort of partnership opportunity where we could do it externally, just to complete, just an overview, overview look and see what's the best way to provide the best quality service at the most affordable price. What else does the mobility manager do that you're going to be using it for? Because that's what our side would have to do.
Oh.
One of the other large components we would like this person to do is to do outreach to private entities in southeast Iowa to evaluate their need for transportation services, like for commuting services. We've done some JARC projects in the past. Those have both been in, actually, one, I even hesitate to say this, but one was Tyson in Columbus Junction. And we've also done a couple down in Fort Madison, too. So, you know, with, with the way the economy is right now, plus, plus the cost to drive personally, and in looking at some transportation statistics that over nine out of 10 people commute by themselves, we think it might be an opportunity to do some outreach and evaluate the need. Another, another outreach opportunity is with our human service agencies. And through our transportation advisory committee, it's a roundtable of human service agencies and elected officials in southeast Iowa. And through that group, we developed the passenger transportation development plan. And we have some work items in there that we'd like to look at as well, like a consolidated call center, where instead of several numbers in southeast Iowa, we could look at, you know, a singular point of entry for transportation services. And that's probably, those are probably the three big ones that we would look at.
Very worthwhile.
Good.
We're looking at this from our side for the one-year funding cycle. What are you doing or looking at?
It just depends what happens during this first year. The mobility manager program, I think Iowa DOT would ideally like it to become self-sufficient over time, and, you know, they would like to reduce the grant funds. Obviously, we'll try to access 80-20 money as long as we can, and as long as we think there's things for that person to do that are beneficial for the region. So I think what's going to happen in year two really depends on what we find through our outreach and activities in year one. So I know that's a little bit evasive, but.
Well, I assume that as you try to find other partnerships with other entities to work with, that you're hoping to get some funding from them to help support that.
Right. And, you know, we probably would have done a mobility manager maybe a couple of years ago, but we just didn't really have the room in our budget to go, to go at it by ourselves. So this is a good opportunity for us to maybe see what the position can do, and if there's a, if there's kind of a multi-year need for it here in the region. And if there's not, then we'll have to evaluate things that way, too.
But from our perspective, you said this is a one-year commitment.
This is a one-year, because we're asking them to do a very specific topic here, is basically to do an overall evaluation, come back.
And we've got a pretty short timeline to look at that, too.
What we tasked them with was to try to have this done in a manner that we could have some responses back that we can incorporate in this next year's budget. So that's an answer back by end of January.
That is a short time.
Very short time.
Yeah. So we're trying to get the process moving on our side, and, you know, I think we're looking forward to it. It's a chance for us to look at our own system, too, in other ways, we can, you know, maybe we can do some other things that we're not doing right now.
Right. Okay.
Very good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Now, let's see, here we have the resolution authorizing filing application for 2012-13 certified local government grant routes for hosting the 2013 Preserve Iowa Summit. Who's talking about that one? Don't everybody look at each other.
This is an opportunity that came, talking with Beth, with the convention and tourism bureau, to apply for some grants to possibly host the 2013 Preserve Iowa Summit in Burlington. And there's some funding available in 2013 and 20, or 2012 and 2013 to apply towards that if that were to be awarded to Burlington. So since the city Burlington's a certified local government, has to come through us, local match would come through the convention and tourism bureau for their cash allotment, and then there'd be quite a bit of in-kind contribution as well, so.
I think that's great. How many people would come to town for this?
Yes, we anticipate, we're doing 300, 350 people. It'll take place in late August of 2013, and all positions throughout the downtown, and then, of course, filling a lot of our hotels during when our visitation season starts to show up and fun. So should be a good.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, thanks. Where'd you go, Beth? Thank you, Eric. We're setting a date for September 14th for sale of property at 547 South Central, and we'll talk about that when that comes up. All right, back to discussion items. If it's okay, we'll just go down the list here. Actually, we shouldn't do that. We should go, we'll talk about Thrive, and then I want to skip the next one and go to the Edstone Middle School, since the superintendent's here. But what do we have to say about Thrive, Jim, or is this for Alicia to talk, or?
We had said for her to come back within a month.
Right.
It's supposed to, month timeframe, so this is up for her. But we did include in the packet a copy of what she's worked up up to this point in terms of the business plan. If you wanted to give an update as to where you're at on it.
I requested an extension on that because I'm still waiting to meet with.
Oh, that's right, I remember. I remember reading that.
Councils and organizations.
Could you come up here and talk, because the people at home can't hear you from back there. Refresh my memory again, Alicia, how much, what's the extension of time that we're looking at here?
We would need about 60 days. One of the organizations doesn't meet until the fall.
Okay. Well, I personally am not in a big rush to move on apple trees, so I have no problem with that, although I still don't necessarily see that the connection that you have to have apple trees in order to make this work, but for me, I guess it's okay.
And I'm no hurry either on that. I would be willing to give you the time you needed. You know, I, and again, I agree with what he's saying. I hope you do also consider other sites. I mean, I'm not particularly in favor of tearing down the apple trees, but I kind of have to look at those as two different things in some ways. I would like to see a use for the apple trees, and I would be in favor of a youth center there, but I think you need to look at also, is that your best option? And are there other options that might be more affordable to you? So I, I'm in favor of the 60-day extension.
I'm fine with that, too. You know, just, you know, looking forward, you know, and I stated this before, I want to make sure that if we put money into the apple trees museum or the building that, you know, what kind of lease agreement can we work out? Because we want Thrive to thrive, you know, and move forward, so, you know, it's, so I'm fine with the 60 days. Because sometimes we move quickly, and sometimes we need to slow it down a little bit and find out, so.
And I, and I personally don't think, I think, I think that we have misread, I guess, this deed. I don't think that the family, I really don't think the family said that. I think that the family agreed to take the buildings down for the benefit of the city. I looked back over this, and this is kind of back on the subject more, just the apple trees, but I think they agreed to take the buildings down, but then to save the city money. And then the American Legion came in and wanted to use that building. And then what I see is a contract between the American Legion and the city, not anything to do with that deed or will, and that they would either sell it or, or they would either move it or tear it down, and instead they gave it back to the city. So I don't feel that, as a city, we are held to feeling we have to tear it down because of the Perkins family. I guess, I don't feel that that was their wish, you know, I.
So what you're saying is?
Yes. I don't have the same interpretation. When I read this, I don't have that interpretation that it was their desire, but.
I do.
Well, I don't, because if you read, it's two separate pieces. There's this piece, and then there's a newspaper article. And it is not, this is not all one piece. This is like three different pieces. But, but I do think you have to separate Thrive also from that and think of the best place for that. And I, and even being someone that would like to save old buildings, if you can't find a way to go in there, which I feel like, I'm with Chris, I mean, it's going to have to be, you're going to have to find the money and the means. And I think that the same thing happened with the American Legion. If you read that article, they said, oh, all the expense to fix this up, and they had to build a wall. And I think, you know, the city would have to make the same kind of deal with Thrive if that happened, but.
But Thrive can't necessarily apply for grants. You would have to be the applicant.
I, you know, I don't know. It would depend on the grant. I don't know that I, I think that we would have to sign on something. But I look at some other things that I know of that are 501(c)(3)'s that they can apply for on behalf of, you know, something. I don't know. I don't know. I guess it depends on how the grant is written, or I don't know what kind of grant you are talking about.
Well, there's the one that I had spoken about before, the CD BG grant, which you would, the city would have to be the applicant for that grant, that specific grant.
And I think the city's done that before, but where we don't put any money in.
That's a, the CD BG public facilities grant is a, this would be an eligible activity where you're, where an activity is going on, but it also has to have a very formalized business plan that's in place that goes along with it.
Right.
Without it, you don't have the basis for going for a grant.
One thing I'm not clear on is that the city currently has a youth facility, right?
J Street.
And now we have Thrive. And I guess, does one complement the other? Are they separate?
Well, I was going to mention that to you about, I think your organization is making the assumption that you're going to absorb J Street into your program? Is that the way I read this?
Because according to your summary, it says that, as of right now, the cost of J Street Youth Center is around $23,000 per year. If the council, if the city council is for Thrive and J Street to merge, Thrive will provide efficient support through the local organization. So you want those two to merge, and then thus, we close down J Street and provide you $23,000 a year.
I think J Street needs rebranded, myself. And, well, I'm not the only one to say that.
Well, I don't doubt that, but.
I think it needs help.
I guess I wouldn't be in a position now to say that we're going to allow J Street to be absorbed into your program.
Right.
Well, okay, and if I could speak, which I am the youth center site supervisor there. And when I got my job description, which states plan, coordinate, and implement programs that will enrich and educate the participants, plan and implement recreational activities that will allow physical movement to encourage cooperative, non-competitive participation. It goes on to state how I'm supposed to clean up the art and supply areas. None of this is down there. I'm trying to implement programs to, into J Street so that it can be used for a purpose other than what it's used for right now.
And would you feel it, how do you feel it's being used now?
Um, I don't feel that it's being used to its full potential. There, it lacks structure. It lacks a purpose. And so I'm just trying to do my job. I'm trying to make, I'm trying to make the youth center better than what it is right now.
But I understand that, but I think one thing that, but then you're also, if we, by dissolving the youth center to Thrive, is that, that's what I've been looking at.
Um, no, I wouldn't say that. I mean, I don't know if there would be a way where maybe other programs such as Thrive could be, I guess, kind of like booster clubs, so to speak. Nonprofit organizations can do different things compared to, you know, a government entity. So where the city could not do a specific thing for the community or the, for the youth center, the nonprofit organizations could.
Like example?
Um, for example, I have looked into a food bank for the J Street Youth Center. Right now, Thrive is providing the snacks for the kids, and, which, there's a vending machine there. But I would have to say 75% of the kids don't bring money when they come. And a lot of the kids, they're walking a long distance to get there. Some of them walk clear across town. So I would at least like to provide them a snack, some, something to drink. So I've looked into a specific food bank that Thrive could pay a small portion for the year, and we could receive healthy snacks, nuts and cranberries and graham crackers, just different kinds of snacks for the kids. So that would be one example.
But you're saying as a city facility, we're not eligible under J Street, but you're eligible under Thrive to get that?
From what I understand, yes. So where the city could not do a specific thing for the community or the, for the youth center, the nonprofit organizations could.
Like example?
Um, for example, I have looked into a food bank for the J Street Youth Center. Right now, Thrive is providing the snacks for the kids, and, which, there's a vending machine there. But I would have to say seventy-five percent of the kids don't bring money when they come. And a lot of the kids, they're walking a long distance to get there. Some of them walk clear across town. So I would at least like to provide them a snack, some, something to drink. So I've looked into a specific food bank that Thrive could pay a small portion for the year, and we could receive healthy snacks, nuts and cranberries and graham crackers, just different kinds of snacks for the kids. So that would be one example.
But you're saying as a city facility, we're not eligible under J Street, but you're eligible under Thrive to get that?
From what I understand, yes.
Well, it sounds like we have an agreement, sixty days, but your project, your paper here needs a lot of refinement, and I assume in sixty days that we'll see that.
And we do request any help that we can get with the business plan. I'm not a business major, so my major is in human services, so we are working on that.
Do you have someone that's helping you with that?
Um, we thought we did. This has just kind of been an interesting journey for us. So there's been a lot of help that has backed out, which is understandable, since we are a pilot program. But we're still meeting with, like I said, organizations and councils to try to find someone that could help us in that area.
Okay. Anything else, counsel?
Well, I'm fine with giving her sixty days.
Okay. Thanks, Lisha.
Okay. Thank you.
Could we go to look at this item about the school zone for, I assume that means the speed zone for Edwardstone Middle School? We have two people that need to talk about this.
Thank you. I'm Jane Evans, Superintendent of Burlington Community School District. First of all, I want to thank the city for your great cooperation on a number of projects over the years. I know that our facilities director, Byron Willsey, has worked closely with your engineering department. Parks and Rec Public Safety has partnered with the school and hope we can continue to partner on many things. Most recently, the city has helped us with our brand-new school that's going to open up. We have the dedication on Sunday, August nineteenth at three o'clock, and then school begins on August twentieth. On behalf of the Burlington School Board, I'm here to request two things for Mason Road. One would be a school zone sign to indicate to people that are driving along Mason Road that they are in an area that is very close to a school, so that they can be alert for turning traffic and for potential kids crossing the road or walking alongside the road until our Safe Route to School grant comes in and we get a sidewalk along Mason Road. And then the second thing is, we are requesting that the speed limit on Mason Road be reduced during school hours only, from thirty-five to twenty miles per hour. Thank you.
That's consistent with other schools.
Correct.
It's a standard, yeah.
I don't have a problem with either one of those.
Steve has some input for us, sir. Okay.
Yes, we're preparing to present a resolution at the next meeting for the establishment of a school zone. We can have a school zone is one issue that has the green signing, the indicators with the picture of the children on the, on the sign. The second issue is the, the speed zone. We are promoting, or we would like to promote that the twenty mile per hour zone be from Dill Street, south along Willow, to the new Sequoia, and then also on Sequoia, west and south to Mason Road. There are no pedestrians, no student pedestrians that are going to be crossing Mason Road. We have no shops, no restaurants, no facilities on the south side of that road, no crosswalk. Most of the traffic engineering guidance and literature indicates that the main, the main reason to go to twenty mile per hour is, and this is in quotes, where school-age pedestrians are crossing the road. And we don't have that, so we feel that it's sort of an overuse or unnecessary use of the twenty mile per hour zone on Mason. And we had met a couple of weeks ago, Jane, we talked about trying to use those green signs on Mason. They'd be a little bit of an advance warning. I've got a picture of them here if you want to see them, but I talked to the police department today, and they, they had the same feeling that you don't use a twenty mile per hour zone to, it's to protect pedestrians and students, not to control speed, per se. You know, the end goal is the students, the extra traffic there, the turning movements are going to slow the traffic. During the school time, when there's turning movements and lots of cars, traffic will yield and it will be moving more slowly than thirty-five miles an hour. Now, I'm not standing here saying that the literature says do not post twenty mile per hour because of certain situations like Mason Road, but from our perspective and the police department as well, it was, Mr. Jeff Klein I spoke to today on that issue, we just feel that the twenty should be posted on the two-sided streets.
So that's the difference in between Division Street and Mason Road, is because there's business on the other side of Division and there's passing students.
Yeah. Division does have a crosswalk there.
So what would be the speed zone on Mason then?
We would, we would leave it thirty-five.
Oh, thirty-five.
See, I'll disagree with it. I think it needs to be down. The reason why is because it's, you know, even though we're looking at pedestrian, I still look at it as a very highly trafficked road. We don't have sidewalks on Mason Road yet. And, you know, I'd rather be safe and more cautious and reduce the speed than have an incident occur. And because we don't, you know, we're Safe Route to Schools yet, sidewalks not put in place, and so I would rather, you know, be on the safe side.
And I understand that, Jane, and Darvin Kendall had expressed the same concern. I guess one comment I'd like to make is that I would hope the school would impress upon the students and the parents that they don't recommend walking or riding on Mason Road, whether it's a thirty-five or a twenty mile an hour. It's just, it's not a place to walk on the road. And I understand there are no sidewalks currently.
I just look on Sunny Side, you know, now we got the sidewalk in, but still, even though there are sidewalks on part of it, kids are still walking the road. Kids are going to be kids, and they're going to be middle schoolers.
Well, you probably see those kids every day.
Yeah. So, but, you know, it's like, either, you know, walk in the grass or the sidewalk, get out of the street, you know, but still, it's, I'd rather be safe than, than have an incident occur, especially because it's coming around that curve. And I would probably say, people don't go thirty-five on that road.
Well, this is the opportunity for you, the counsel, to decide how that resolution will be worded, and, you know, I think we've put a few pieces of information in front of you. I think that's the extent of the things that we talked about when we met a few weeks ago.
And the bicyclists, too, are another concern to me.
But if we're having a resolution come before us a week from tonight, is that what you're suggesting? Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, that was the intended plan.
And as of right now, the only thing that you'd be proposing then is to put up signs, and you'd have no language concerning speed limits?
The city's code only uses the language of establishing school zones by resolution. School zone is sort of split up into two different things. You have the, the advance warning, which are the green signs now, the fluorescent green, and then you have the reduced speed as well. And I don't think the other piece of our code talks about... In Code Chapter Seventy-seven, where we talk about speed zones, we have a Section Three titled Special Twenty Mile Per Hour Speed Zones. Under Item B, it says, "Any sign, school zone," and it goes ahead and lists the hours between seven and, or seven-thirty and four. We always post the hours on the signs throughout town. So it's actually a speed, a school speed limit, if you will. So there's maybe some subtle wording difference, but the resolution would, should probably establish the limits of this zone and could also have a statement or sentence about the, the posting of the twenty mile per hour. Willow and, and Sequoia are currently posted as of today, I believe. So those, those are twenty mile an hour. I saw those in place.
To me, it just seems like Sequoia ought to be understood that would be twenty. I guess that doesn't, that's an operator, in my view, but...
It is another example contrary to what I'm trying to promote, because there are also no crossings at Sequoia.
But it is. I mean, that street was there for, it's there for the school.
And we have drive connections.
But there will be houses on the other side when, as soon as you sell the lots, as soon as they sell lots, and they'll be built there. But I'm with Chris on it. I would like to see a twenty on Mason. I really would, but part of that's the, the old driver and teacher coming out.
But then you also hit it when they sell lots, you know, and so that could be tomorrow or it could be next week, and then so you might as well just do it now.
Well, and I think of bicyclists, too. I think that is a good point.
Well, we're not allowed to make a decision, but we have to get him some direction. Give some input, sir.
So where do you want to go? He's recommending that, have you ever approved the Willow and, by resolution?
I would all be one, it would be one area.
So his recommendation is to have the two streets. If you want Mason, you need, you need to give him direction to have that in it. From a staffing perspective, I understand what he's saying. If you want to go as more safe based off of this, what school's wanting and just your own thoughts on it, give him the direction. I don't have anything beyond that for him.
Well, that's my direction, Steve.
Yeah. I think we know how to write the resolution and...
Everybody's phone is ringing here at the same time. Is there something going on or what's happening?
Mine, I'll leave mine on silent for meetings, please.
Well, I do, too. My pocket was buzzing, so I found her. Okay. I see why.
Yeah, same message?
Yeah. I didn't read it, but I assumed. Okay. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Ms. Evans. Solid waste.
Still had from the same thing as last, last meeting for solid waste. Just trying to put together a, look at a rate structure that will allow us to get to where we have a positive balance over the next five years. As we had talked about last time, the question came up about whether we'd look at outsourcing this, and our response, let's do evaluation systematically, not take too much on at any given time. And most of our issues are in a general fund that we need to take a look at. I think we have some other things that we can, over time, look at with sanitation, whether even, even with our, doing this ourselves, there are options for being able to change the way we, what, what equipment we're using and able to reduce the number of people that were used to provide the same service internally, whether that has an impact on cost. I know that we've put together some information, and Stephanie did, for, just, just a brief thing, just for other communities here in the area.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you. And not to be super scientific, because it's not, it's only a couple other towns, but what Levine provides service for in the area, West Burlington is twelve-sixty. They have two separate fees. The base fee plus is...
Recycling.
Yeah. Plus recycling. Recycling's three fifteen, something like that, which leaves nine forty-five then for the base fee.
Yes.
So they do have two separate fees, which I mentioned on the radio, but didn't have it discussed. Danville, they provide it fourteen. You said Middleton, when you talked to them, they do provide cheaper, but your comment was?
Well, it's, it's not through the city of Middleton. All of them just contracts up where...
So they have them all fairly close together?
Exactly. Levine just, since the houses are so close together, they give them a discounted rate.
And then where Levine provides service in the Burlington area, it is more in a rural area, so it's a different type of service than what in town is, but they're at fourteen there.
Well, and they also do, Levine also does lawn clipping and pickups, and, you know, which is additional.
Yeah.
Which is four, or two dollars a week, four dollars for rental or something a month.
But we're, our, our cost now is twelve-ten a month, and we're talking about going to thirteen. It's, it's in line with what some of the others in the area are. Mount Pleasant's cheaper. I think their, their whole structure is different. They're, they do the three-fifteen recycling plus like two-fifty for a base fee, and then a dollar fifty per bag, and that starts at the first bag. And if you figure four and a third weeks of, a month, their, their fee structure ends up being six, eight, six-fifty, eight-fifty, nine, it's still a twelve-fifteen a month, which is right where we're at right now. So they're all kind of in the same, same, same price range. Theirs is, they do theirs themselves. They only have thirty-two hundred customers. They don't have a single permanent staff member, but they've been able to work with part-time people. And our comment was, is that this works right now because of the people we have in place. We don't know what would happen if we tried to get people to work part-time doing the work that they're doing when this group retires. It's not, not a complete comprehensive look around the region, but those are all communities that do work within our landfill and our landfill's rate structure, which is fairly expensive. Yes. If you're getting into another county where they don't have the same rate structure at the landfill, they can provide a service at a cheaper rate, but that's not a true comparison.
We're obligated to use this landfill, though.
Yes. Now, again, I think that there are some things that we can look at regardless, long-term, with our efficiency of service. One of the examples that was given, talking with Marion and how they provide service, they have twelve thousand, a little over twelve, twelve thousand five hundred customers. I think we're ninety-three hundred in that range. They're able to provide it with a full-time staff of six, and we're at seven-point-seven-five. Well, you'd think that we should realistically be able to do it for fewer people, but they use a different, use a different truck. They're using a truck that picks up garbage and recycling at the same time, one person per truck. Kind of want to take a look and go up there and see how they're running their service. They also don't have the same type of an old, old downtown and don't have to deal with the alleys that we have to deal with, which changes what you're able to use.
It is the arm that comes out, which are alleys.
Yes. You can't use an arm in the alleys, so there's, there's some things you have to take into account with how we provide service, too. But again, what we're looking at for a rate structure, and are proposing right now, is to look at going from that twelve-ten to thirteen here at the next quarterly billing cycle. We'd like to have a resolution come forward to adjust the rates for that.
Annually, that rate increase would amount to what?
Well, that's, that's a, I think about an eight percent rate, rate increase. I didn't really do a percentage on that.
I don't either. But it would be two dollars and seventy cents per bill, the quarterly bills.
Quarterly bill.
Two dollars and seventy cents. You know, I think people complain about that bill, but I really think it's more tied to the water bill part of it than this part.
Yeah. And even when you look at that average water rate, as just mentioned, the mayor, the last time I saw a study, is a residential, average residential customer is paying about forty dollars a month for water. And you're seeing maybe just a tad under that, or I haven't looked at this in two years, so I don't know what the new numbers are. And our rate for an average residential is a little bit below that. We're not out of line in terms of average. That still doesn't help for the individual customer who has to pay a bill or when you see a change from one year to the next. You're going to find a lot of communities that are paying dramatically less. You can find communities paying half of what we do. But you can also find communities that are paying substantially more. And it's kind of a matter of who's been forced to go through the sewer plan update or...
What, you know, and I've asked this question before, and you probably won't know, but, you know, some areas in Burlington have water meters and some don't.
Why?
Because, you know, I've, you know, my... Because, you know, I've, you know, my, I have an elderly neighbor who, she lives by herself. She has three bathrooms. She pays more than I do with that too, but yet I have two kids and I would guarantee we do a lot of laundry every day, everything else. And, you know, it's just, to me, it's, it's, it's not fair enough, right? On, on the water bill.
Right, it should be related to the number.
Yeah.
You know, that's.
Yeah.
And it's like, I'm sorry.
I have the same thing. I have three bathrooms, one person, and my neighbor, there's seven people living there with one toilet and, you know. And then also, like, you know, downtown, they're metered, which I think is more fair, but where one building can be metered and red monthly, another one two blocks down the street, they tell me can only be red quarter. I mean, I don't understand that. I, I, this probably isn't the time to bring up, but I just think sometime we should look at the water, our water company thing.
That's a discussion to be held with the board of public works.
Right, the Water Works Department.
I guess, you know, jump back on.
That was a choice made decades ago when they first started the water program here to go without meters because of, I assume because of the plentiful supply of water and there wasn't, seemed to be, probably wasn't a big concern about it. Now, if you're going to go, I'm sorry.
No, go right.
You're going to go change to meter everybody, you're talking about huge expense.
Oh, yes, that's a big ticket.
But I just think there's some things that need to be looked at there. I don't know that some of it can't be.
But like you say, that's another discussion.
You can't, you know, you can't pay online for water. There's just some things that need to be looked at there.
But, you know, looking at these rates for garbage pickup, you know, West Burlington, it's twelve sixty, but it's unlimited. Where here, we're at two-ten and then that's one container. And it's a dollar fifty for every container we put out. And so that starts to add up very quickly. And so, you know, we just had an increase at the beginning of this new fiscal year by fifty-five cents. So if we're adding another, you know, jumping it up even more, so really within another, you know, since two thousand nine, we're at, two thousand nine, we're at nine dollars and fifty cents.
Which was way under what it should.
Which might have been under, but yet, you know, that's where I came back. I would like to see a true comparison versus, you know, do we privatize it and then throw our city into it and, and let them bid it out too and see where we stand with other companies within our, the service that we provide. Because I don't want to keep on raising rates to make up for shortfalls that we had before.
If we, if we do this, call someone, Reed.
Reed, that's okay. That's Fleming over there.
Fleming's over there. This takes us through, how long? Go ninety cents beginning this next quarter?
September first, no, September thirtieth, I guess at the end of the quarter.
Yeah. September, beginning October one through July of next year.
And I also understand what you're saying about wanting to do an evaluation.
And that would give us some time to, my point is it would give us some time to do the evaluation.
Yeah.
Because I just want to be fair to the citizens, you know, because, you know, my understanding it's a potentially, you know, we go to ninety cents and then it's going to be tiered from there. But where are we five years from now in comparison to other rates from other companies? I'm not saying, you know, the service we provide, I'm not saying it's not good. I just would like to know what, what it is for a comparison.
And, and I think those, those comparisons, I understand what you're wanting to get to. We need to get to a rate structure that makes us solvent with where we are now, which doesn't mean that we don't do that.
Right.
But I'd like to do the other, we have the other ones I want to get through first because they are higher priority to make sure that we are in line to have our budget for this next year.
Because I look at it, you know, if we, and unfortunately we've had to do this before in the past, if we have a garbage truck go down and we have to get a new one, how do we get that? We have to bond for it. And that's the wrong way about going. And well, we did it before in the past.
If I, if.
Go, go right.
If I read your numbers right, Stephanie, the ending balance would be improved by, what the lower, fifty thousand, no, ninety, eighty thousand dollars almost, right? The deficit would be eighty thousand dollars less.
These are Jim's numbers, but I think.
Yeah, that's probably right. And the rate increase the following year would be enough to be able to cash flow the purchase of a replacement vehicle.
See, that's what I'm looking for. I'm, I'm with you.
And that's, it hasn't been, and that's what we haven't done, is cash flow that vehicle. We've been bonding those.
I still want us to get away from that. If we're going to run our own.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, you know, because I always look at, you know, sometimes when privatized, they take care of that expense. You know, you look at agreements that are five years, you know, agreements or however you want to set it up.
And this wage concession is, is also calculated into here?
No.
Yes, it is. When I did those numbers, I did two percent annual increase.
Okay.
Sorry, I took that into account, Stephanie.
Okay, good.
Kind of being optimistic.
Yeah, I was like, wait.
Okay.
So when, and actually it has two percent for fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and then three percent for the out years, just to have something that is cautious and careful.
Well, certainly that's something that we could look at too, is the staffing levels, like you said, to find ways to save money there. But I really think people in the community are really interested in us finding ways to save money. That's, that's the sense I get from most everybody I talk to. Okay. And if privatizing is the way to do that, then we need to look at it, but.
I'm just throwing it out there for options.
Yeah. And I, I've tried to say that for the last few years that I've been on council. But this will get us to the end of July next year and make progress on the issue. That's the big deal, I think. Okay, we have any other questions or discussions about this?
Nope.
Stephanie, you have any else you want us to say?
No, so this will be a resolution August twentieth then for an increase?
A week from tonight. Okay. As long as you're there, what, what can you tell us about Treasurers Report?
Okay. We can start off first with the, let's start off with the June thirty-first, two thousand twelve. I kind of explained last time that I keep bringing you the preliminary report until the final one was done. So the balances have changed. I've made some entries. We've made adjustments. Expenses have been put back into last year that were paid in July. Basically, we're getting the books to the accrual basis. So as of August eighth then, you can see our general fund, the, the first balance was in the hole still and now it's back up to three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I'm not sure if it'll change from there. I know we estimated it would hopefully be around four hundred thousand at the end of the year for FY twelve, but just depending on the rest of the expenses and revenues that I can accrue back for August, hopefully there'll be more revenues than expenses. So, but that's where we're sitting now. I should, I don't think it'll change that much. So does anybody have any questions on any of these balances or?
Can you show me, go through this and tell me the balances, you know, we borrowed all that money. What balances did we rectify by doing that?
Okay. If we, basically, our TIF balances are a lot better than they were. So if you go down to the tax increment financing funds, which start with two thousand.
Right.
You'll see like our Flint Ridge, I mean, that was sitting, at the beginning of the year was a huge hole, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand. And so now, basically, we've, you know, borrowed the money for TIF projects that we'd done in the past. So that's why that balance now. We're hoping that, you know, it's not always going to be even, meaning our bond payments might be a little bit more than the TIF revenues we're taking in in a given timeframe, but we'll be a lot closer to balancing out than we have been. Downtown TIF too is the same way. Those were bond proceeds that were put in to help those fund balances. And then the majority of the other ones are on the capital projects, but sheet where it starts off with street and sewer projects.
Mm-hmm.
As of June thirtieth, twelve, you'll see a lot of negative fund balances on the beginning column, seven-one-eleven, and then you'll see a lot of even balances, zero balances as of June thirtieth. So those are projects where we borrowed the money to cover the negative funds.
Okay.
Self-insurance fund is the other one.
Oh, on the first page.
The second page, six thousand and six began at two hundred and thirty thousand in the hole. And right now we have, you're showing it thirty thousand to the good.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then where you can kind of see it, another way to look at it is when you, we move on to the July thirty-first balances. When you go back and look at those capital projects, it's a, it's a lot shorter now because I've took, I've taken out all the ones that are not current projects going on or don't have.
Right.
Negative fund balances.
That's what I was looking at here.
Yeah. And, you know, the majority of these fund balances that are in the negative are grants. So we've expended the money. Now we're asking for reimbursement and so it's just a timing issue.
Okay.
Of getting back the money.
Okay.
You got your Safe Route, your trail system, the NSP programs.
There is one major one that still hasn't been addressed there though, and that's the park and rec.
Park and rec, I saw that. Would be the recplex and golf course.
The big thing that.
Auditorium.
Is when the auditorium was done. It's not the only thing, but that's the big.
So then when, if you look at the July thirty-first Treasurers Report too, you see the general fund is, you know, way in the hole again. It's, all the property taxes we received in July have been accrued back to June because they were for that period. And then it's just a low, you know, revenue month for us. July is, and our expenses basically are pretty consistent with payroll and projects and so.
Since you mentioned the auditorium, are we looking at a, how to rectify that? Are we, a rate structure change or?
As we go through the next two meetings, Travis coming here and we start talking about, I mean, it's not just the auditorium, it's the reclex, the golf course and road use tax. There's recreation fund that still sits a hundred thousand in the hole, the vehicle maintenance, property maintenance, parking. All of those need to get right-sized still. And really the only place to have money come into them is from the general fund.
Right.
So that's where we have, that's the big reason why we have to come up with a way to cut a million dollars out of our budget. We have to be able to transfer on an annual basis a significant enough amount of money to be able to show progress to get alleviating those balances. And we, and then we also, in order to take care of those capital projects, we borrowed three and a half million dollars on those. It's a little bit more than that.
For which ones?
To take care of the outstanding capital projects and we did the borrowings.
Oh, yeah, it was right over there.
And then the repayments on that, on a ten-year basis is close to four hundred and fifty thousand. On a fifteen-year basis, it'll be about three hundred thousand. We haven't refinanced them to where we're doing a debt structure. But the council has to decide, are we increasing property taxes to pay that or are we having that come out of general fund? My thoughts that I've heard so far are we're trying to make it come out of the general fund.
Right.
So you're going to have, you, we, that's where we have to come up with about a million dollars a year change, but Travis will kind of lay that out over the next two meetings.
That's going to be a challenge.
Well, just with, with what we've, what we've talked about with the changes in salaries will help. I mean, that's, it's, it's about, that's about a two hundred thousand dollar change in next year's budget from what we would have otherwise anticipated. We've talked on your side, depending on what we do, we have a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars worth of savings in salaries there.
Yep.
Fire department, we've left two positions open and that puts them at, from a fourteen member crew on, down to thirteen, at least on two of the shifts. And if we hold the next position that comes open, not unfilled and get down to thirteen, there's three positions, which is about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings. So you take two hundred thousand in that original base contracts plus two fifty plus one fifty to two hundred.
You're a solid two hundred, actually a little over.
So you're, you're already a little over six hundred thousand. That's not, that's, that's not it.
No, but boy, that's.
But that's also why we're talking about transit and looking at, at some potential savings there, which will cover another, hopefully cover another chunk of that. And we're going to have to make some other things.
Right.
Happen as well still.
Sure makes me feel a lot better about things and, and I hope people realize how hard you're working to try to not increase property taxes. You know, I think you are trying to work hard and, and do everything you can do.
Part of our, I guess part of what we're trying to accomplish is how do we do this in a way that doesn't, I mean, I think we need to evaluate all of our services regardless. But I think that you need to do that in a way that doesn't, isn't under the pressure of you just have to cut without thinking through what does that do to your level of service provision. And I'm hoping that we're taking the time to look at it. You know, we've talked, as we've gone through the interview process for the police chief position about some different options that hadn't been considered before, about ways to provide service in a little bit different way where we can come up with some other things to do. But they're not just overnight switches.
Right, right.
And, and those, if you're able to plan it and take a little bit more time on it, I think you can come to some better solutions.
And I appreciate that you're doing it that way too.
I do too.
Knee-jerk reactions usually end up hurting really badly. Anything else, Stephanie, you want to add?
I don't have anything else. Do you have any more questions on the report?
Mr. Fleming, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed. Okay, thank you. There are two appointments. Low rent housing board has a vacancy and the Riverfront advisory committee has a vacancy. So you can look at those applications and see what you think there, folks. Okay. All right. Do we have any council committee reports?
I went to the meeting, but there wasn't one. I've seen yours.
Oh.
Wow.
You were the only one who showed up.
I was the only one who showed up. So I gave myself a raise.
Mr. Reed?
I was going to say something. I can't remember what I was going to say. So I guess it wasn't that important.
Okay.
Senior moment.
No, 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 no. No, no, no.
Jim, you're on the board of this Southeast Iowa Regional Board, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Actually, we have a meeting with Mike next Monday with, once a quarter or so he has the, each individual county's reps come in and just meet with him individually. So I think that's, that's next Monday for lunch. Anything, Ms. Anderson?
No, I was not here last week, so I didn't have a nitty.
Okay. Mr. Fernando, you have anything else? Then I think we're done. Thank you, folks.
Stay high. All that pose, good standing.
Both on what?
Attorney.
All right.